So what we've been.
Call this special meeting, uh, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three to order. Uh, roll call, let the record show that all board members are in attendance. Um, Mr. Melby will not be with us tonight. Um, otherwise, I think we're ready to move to the pledge of allegiance. So please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, uh, we'll move to section one point four, public comment information. We currently offer two ways in which the community can participate in regular school board meetings. The first public comment section on the agenda is for addressing current action items that are on tonight's agenda. These comments must be submitted by noon on the day of the meeting. The procedures for submission are posted on our website under Board of School Trustees. The second public comment section is for general comments and does not have to be specific to an agenda topic. If you wish to address the board during the general public comments section of the meeting, please put your name, address, and topic on a card, and please give to Dev- Deb Hayes at the start of the meeting. All public comments are limited to three minutes per individual with a total of thirty minutes allotted for each public comment section on the agenda. Are there any individual public comments on action items? Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I would like to move to section three, uh, consent agenda.
The consent agenda contains items, uh, three point one through three point three. And with a recommendation, I'll go ahead and go through and read those.
Okay, please do.
Three point one is the approval of the accounts payable voucher as registered. Uh, three point two is the approval of the payroll voucher register, and three point three is approval of the personnel report. And again, since this is, uh, kind of mid-month, it's a little shorter than normal, but you see the recommendations for employment as listed, the resignations as listed, and then a request to amend a leave of absence as, uh, presented.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trippenfeldus. Uh, would the board like any items broken down individually? Okay, uh, Mr. Trippenfeldus, do you have a recommendation?
Uh, if nothing needs to be broken down individually, the administration recommends that the board approve with one motion and one vote the consent agenda items three point one through and including three point three as presented.
Is there a motion and a second?
Schwartz-Wolff, so moved.
Dougherty, second.
There is a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
I would say I just wanted, I did, uh, talk to Mr. Trippenfeldus about the laptop technicians. I noticed there were two, and we had hired another one in December, and I thought, what's going on with our laptops? So I just, he did respond that these were temporary positions to help out over the winter break, so it made me feel better. So we do not have a run on laptop technicians, and these were temporary positions. I just wanted the public to know when they see that, because that caught my eye.
All right, any, anything else? Okay, very good. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving to action item four point one, resolution number four eight seven. Uh, is there a motion to approve resolution four eight, excuse me, resolution eight four seven, uh, regarding extension of the two thousand and eighteen operating referendum tax levy fund as presented?
Dougherty, so moved.
Is there a second?
Dempsey, second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So I would just invite, uh, Mr. Brock Bauscher from Baker Tilly, uh, to come up to the podium and do a presentation regarding the referendum resolution. We also have Mr. Quackenbush here tonight from Barnes and Thornburg, who can answer any questions that you may have as well.
Excellent. Uh, Mr. Bauscher, welcome. Good to see you again.
Sorry, sorry, forgive me. So goal for this evening is working with Mr. Heller and Mr. Melby, looking at the next approximately nine years in regards to the operating referendum, how that impacts the financials going forward, and look at the modeling on the scenarios we built based upon certain assumptions that we expect to occur economically, then some of the initiatives that want to be accomplished by this board and Mr. Heller, looking again through twenty thirty-one. So four main topics is we're going to review the assumptions that are baked into the financial projections. Then we'll look at the baseline financial projections, and when I talk about baseline financial projections, you'll see that I mean that if the operating referendum were not renewed, what that would impact and how that would impact financials going forward. And we'll look at that same funding baseline projection with the operating referendum. If it were to be renewed, how that impacts cash flow and programs and services going forward, and ultimately ended up with what everybody wants to know, that's all well and good, but what's it mean to me, Joe taxpayer, in regards to my tax bill? But first and foremost, we want to highlight what assumptions, as I think everyone on this board knows all too well, is what are the assumptions and the volatility of the economic markets? What does that mean to our projections going forward? So we based all of our projections on, you'll see on the top part, the receipts or the revenues over the next eight, nine years. So our projections go through twenty thirty-one, as if we were to pursue an operating referendum renewal in twenty twenty-three, we would start this renewal in twenty twenty-four, then it would end in twenty thirty-one. So that's why you see a lot of references made to the year twenty thirty-one. So our projections on the certified tax levy are based upon projections and working with a group called Policy Analytics. They have access to a special database, that is from the DLGF, that has parcel-by-parcel analysis on where we expect not only where AVs or assessed values have trended through the past years, but also where we expect those trends to occur for the school town of Munster through twenty thirty-one. So we're actually looking at parcel-by-parcel data and trying to develop these projections long-term. So with that in mind, with parcel-by-parcel analysis, we're also projecting out based upon certain trends of where our max levy growth quotient is going to occur for the operations fund, we're also projecting out what's going to occur with circuit breaker tax caps that are impacting school town of Munster. We're looking at parcel-by-parcel analysis, and what we're projecting out is, on average, circuit breaker is going to be an impact of about two point five million dollars per year to through twenty thirty-one. Right now, we're about one point seven, one point eight million dollars. So the fact that our operations fund max levy growth quotient is projected to grow about four and a half to five percent per year, is growing more rapidly than what we're projecting for the school town of Munster with assessed value to be about three percent per year through twenty thirty-one. So our levy is increasing more rapidly than our taxable value, which is causing that increased circuit breaker through our projection. So it's adding some pressure to our operational costs, because the revenue is not expected to keep pace with our revenue. Our expenses are, are exceeding our, our revenue, as I just mentioned. So I'll go to that a little more detail here shortly. The third line license exercise tax, C-VET FIT, which we refer to as miscellaneous revenue, we keep that in line with what your certified budget for twenty twenty-three calculates out to be. And with some economic volatility, we're expecting about collections of about ninety-five percent based on that twenty twenty-three budget. Basic grant, this is the highest form of revenue for the school town of Munster, like all Indiana schools. So it's revenue coming from the state of Indiana. And we base these projections on what's actually being made available from the state of Indiana to the school town of Munster for fiscal years twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Now, for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, which is currently being worked on downtown with this next binding budget, we're assuming those dollars are being kept flat from here through twenty thirty-one. Now, there is some talk that the state of Indiana may provide some increased revenue, but as we want to have a long picture of what we expect the state of Indiana to occur, if there's a recession or something unexpected occur, we can't guarantee that those dollars are going to be here on an annual basis. So working with your team, targeted, just maintaining per pupil revenue as we're experiencing in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Working with Mr. Melby and Mr. Heller, we're in developing the, the enrollment projections through twenty thirty-one. So actually, working with your team and basing those projections on what we expect enrollment to occur through twenty thirty-one. Then all other basic grant revenue sources like special ed and full day, excuse me, um, career and vocational ed, we're all keeping proportional to where we are in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. The fiscal year twenty twenty-three is our foundation, and we're just keeping per pupil revenue the same through twenty thirty-one for basic grant and all other categorical grants. The other receipts, this is other type of state revenue, like summer school or local revenue, like facility rental. So some of the smaller ancillary type of revenues and what we're doing is just keeping that number flat either from the twenty twenty-two actuals or the twenty twenty-three budget order. So keeping those level through twenty thirty-one. You've heard me mention twenty twenty-four through twenty thirty-one. We're assuming net assessed value is going to grow on average about three percent. And that's almost right in the ballpark of what you've experienced back through two thousand and nine. So those who are on the, on the board back in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, can remember that shift where more dollars were given toward homestead credits and supplemental homestead credits. So that caused a, a change in, beginning in two thousand and nine. So now, we're looking at three percent increase if everything remains the same. So historically, we've been somewhere between three and a half to three point six percent growth. So again, three percent is, uh, pretty close to in the ballpark where we've been historically. On the expense side, we are basing everything off the twenty twenty-two actuals. And those, the twenty twenty-two actuals are, again, where the programs and services have been provided to teachers and students in what the, the administration of the board have determined the needs for those programs and services. So based upon the twenty twenty-two actuals, then also working with Mr. Heller and Mr. Melby on additional programs and services that could be needed over the next eight, nine years. Pretty challenging thing to know exactly what programs and services are going to be added when the actual students are not, uh, in, in attendance yet. However, based upon where we anticipate those needs occurring with the, uh, current enrollment, then as another key part of our projections with ESTR dollars ending in twenty twenty-four, we're providing salaries and benefits that are being paid by federal dollars currently. So once those dollars end, we have to shift those costs back to local funds. So we're incorporating the loss of that federal dollars to be funded at the local level. So projecting ahead with every program service needed, we're anticipating a four and a half percent increase to our cost from twenty twenty-four and beyond. We'll get into that a little more detail here shortly. So all assumptions, all forecasts are based upon assumptions, and that's how we broke out the assumptions going forward. Looking now based upon those assumptions and based upon those forecasted revenue sources and expenses, you can see here a breakout between collectively in the blue bars, the education fund, operations, rainy day, and operating referendum. You can see the actuals from twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-two. So you, you may see a big jump in twenty nineteen compared to twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two. And you see that note below, that's reflective of incorporating some transfers that were made for those who were on the board back in two thousand and nineteen. We shifted from the general fund, capital projects fund, transportation and bus replacement, to now the education and operations. So two thousand and nineteen reflects those transfers that were made from those funds that were closed into these new funds. That's why you see a spike in twenty nineteen compared to the preceding years. So in this chart, the blue represents the annual revenue for those four funds. Again, the education fund, operations, rainy day, and operating referendum. Why those four funds? It's because S and P or your credit agency is looking at those four funds in totality. They view that those are your total operational costs. So not just education or operations in op- in isolation, but also your rainy day fund and with that existing operating referendum as well. So the twenty twenty-twos are the last year of the actuals that you can see in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, the projections. And you heard me say that if we pursue a renewal in May of twenty twenty-three, the renewal starts in twenty twenty-four. However, if this board chose to not seek renewal of the operating referendum, or if we're not successful, we would still have one more year of revenue for the operating referendum to come in. So based upon that assumption that if it were not renewed for whatever reason, twenty twenty-four would be the last year of operating referendum revenue for this current operating referendum. So that's why you see a significant decrease in those blue bars in twenty twenty-four compared to twenty twenty-five and beyond. So if we let the operating referendum existing fall off or we're not renewed, you can see that widening between the blue bars, which represent our revenue, and the annual yellow, which are our expenses for those four funds. You can see through time, if we didn't have to make budget cuts, that widening gap between the blue and the yellow bars gets pretty significant, not just in twenty twenty-five, but based upon the assumptions of four and a half percent cost increase per year, gets really, really wide and by end of twenty thirty-one, which creates a significant budget deficit. But not a pretty picture in looking at our baseline projection. So if we were not to change our approach or not change our business model, not make those budget cuts, what would it do to our cash balance? Well, it'd basically mean that we'd run out of cash in, at the end of, uh, sometime in twenty twenty-eight. So we've been building and accumulating a cash balance through twenty twenty-two. And we've been increasing our cash balance, which has been viewed positively by the credit agency, which I'll show toward the end of this presentation. But by twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, you heard me say that if that's the last year of our revenue. So this line graph represents, the blue represents the school town of Munsters, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four cash balance between the education fund, operations, rainy day, and operating referendum. So if twenty twenty-four were the last year of our operating referendum revenue, you can start seeing twenty twenty-five and beyond, that gap between the blue and the yellow bars on the prior page, what that would do to our cash balance ending twelve thirty-one between all those funds, where you get that really, really ominous red at the end, where we run out of money and couldn't no longer operate. So of course, those school corporation could operate without money in the bank, but we're in a place now where we've been maintaining a, a, a strong cash balance, which has helped our creditate, our credit rating. But without that operating referendum to support those programs and services, there wouldn't be no way to, to, uh, fund programs and services. That's why you see a sick, significant dive beginning in twenty twenty-five and beyond. That second dotted line you see for comparison sake represents a fifteen percent recommended cash balance. And you may ask yourself, why fifteen percent? This is what the board chose in the prior referendum, maintain at least fifteen percent of cash balance for expenses when we were talking to the community back in two thousand and seventeen. It's also what a group called GFOA, or Government Finance Officers Association, recommends maintaining at least two months of reserve. So you can see how the school town of Munster has compared to what professional associations maintain as the minimum cash balance. But we would, we would lose that target beginning in twenty twenty-seven. So now you see what a really ugly scenario would look like if the operating referendum were not renewed in some capacity from now through twenty thirty-one. So alternatively, running the modeling, if we were to maintain, and again, just maintain our current tax rate for the operating referendum, how would that impact our cash balances going forward? So again, just to quickly summarize what the operating referendum would be, a tax rate of point zero four one nine six per one hundred dollars of assessed value, that generates based upon the twenty twenty-four estimated levy of about nine point nine million. Through the life of our projections with that annual growth of about three percent on net assessed value, the average levy would be about eleven point four million dollars. And our cash balance, as you'll see, based upon the same modeling, so no changes in expenses, just the impact to our, for maintaining the operating referendum tax rate, we would have at the end of twenty thirty-one of about eight point one six million dollars. That translates to twelve point seven one percent based upon our assumptions. So the same chart, same breakout that you've previously seen, this model assumes that the board pursues a renewal in twenty twenty-three and maintains that point four one nine six from twenty twenty-four through twenty thirty-one. So the expenses are identical to what you've previously seen. The only change in this chart is the blue bars that represent the annual maintenance or maintaining point four one nine six. So even though we see some gaps, because again, our expenses are expected to increase more rapidly than our revenue, however, toward the latter part of the, the, the comparison of the blue or the, the bars, from the blue to the yellow, the gap is not as wide. But still, based upon our projections, the yellow bars are getting bigger than the blue bars. So based upon those assumptions and maintaining point four one nine six, here's a similar comparison of our cash balance as of twelve thirty-one of each year. So the same funds, so comparing, comparing that dotted gray line you see here of maintaining at least fifteen percent operating balance through the life of the referendum, you can see an umbrella effect with these projections, and this is very, very normal, very consistent to what we see in a lot of referendum projections, because with these projections going forward, you heard me mention, four and a half percent increase per year on the expense side is growing more rapidly than three percent net assessed value for the operating referendum. So through time, because of inflation and your costs are going up, you're accumulating cash balance, but as time wears on and those costs are growing more rapidly than your revenue, you, you begin to outpace, your expenses outpace your revenue. However, that final target. All right, President Castro, I'm going to point right above you.
Good.
That ending point is about twelve point seven percent of your expenses. So near that fifteen percent, but that point four one nine six, based upon our assumptions, does not maintain that fifteen percent target. So we'll just have to monitor, if the board elects to pursue that point four one nine six, we'll have to monitor year by year, compare our cost to our actual revenue to see what the needs are and determine, um, if anything needs to be reduced through the life of the operating referendum to maintain that fifteen percent. But in pa- on paper, maintaining about one and a half months of reserves at the end of twenty thirty-one. So the important part for maintaining that tax rate is what is the impact to taxpayers? And what I'll be proud to say is, based upon. And what I'll be proud to say is, based upon the average taxpayer, you see a lot of zeros on this page. So that means that there is no increase to taxpayers with a proposal to extend the operating referendum. So based upon our work with the Lake County Auditor's Office. The average home value in Munster is about 273,000, 275, excuse me, 275,000. With the assumed, the assumed $48,000 homestead credit and 35,000, excuse me, 35% supplemental homestead credit beginning in 2024 taxes. That homeowner, that average homeowner of about 275,000 is paying a tax value of about 148,000. But as you heard me mention, if we maintain the point 4196, there is no increase to taxpayers. Now we have for reference, ag land, there's only about $97,000 of ag land in Munster. So really not, not too relevant, but probably more relevant is that commercial and rental. Reference of for each hundred thousand dollars, there is no increase to taxpayers. And I will say that until you get sick of it, there is no increase to taxpayers as part of this proposal. Now, the part that I know Mr. Quakken Bush can talk about in more detail perhaps with the language in the ballot. But the change from, from past operating referendum to the existing one, if put on the ballot. Is now taxpayers will see a percentage. The taxpayers, just by pursuing a point 4196 tax rate, maintaining it. Taxpayers will see a residential impact of 53.1%. So in working with Lake County Auditor's Off, Auditor's Office. Calculating what the quote, original impact would be with a point 4196. So we went back and calculated what that percent increase was for 2018. Because that was the quote, original impact. So going back and what that impact would have been in 2018. Calculated for residential taxpayers. So that average taxpayer of 275,000. Impact is 53.1%. So taxpayers or voters will see 53.1% on the ballot question. Business, average business owners. See a 49% impact in the ballot question. But I think for us to continue to tell them what is actually occurring is the estimated increase. Now this is not on the ballot and sharing this just as a reference. There is no increase to the tax rate being proposed. So again, there's a change from what occurred in ballot question in 2018 compared to the ballot question if pursued in 2023. So a couple of data points, this board is, is very well versed in data comparison. So what, in working with Mr. Melby and Mr. Heller pulling some comparative data for Lake, Lake County. Now that 2023, so pay 2023 certified tax rates compare out to. You can see a few different. Your error. Sorry about that. So this comparative graph has a few different colors. This represents all school corporations in Lake County. That gray bar, the light gray bar represents the non-exempt tax rate. That's for tax rates that are for non-referendum funds. The light blue for the other school corporations represent exempt funds or referendum approved funds. So Lake County, a number of school corporations have tax rates. There are more who will be pursuing this May. I'm not going to mention names to protect the innocent. But many school corporations have and will, again, will be pursuing in May of 2023. Munster, similar to all the others, has a non-exempt tax rate, which is that almost black color. And an exempt rate, which is that, I'm not good with colors, maybe turquoise color there. But all in all, the total tax rate of about $1.29 is what the certified 2023 tax rate is for the school town of Munster. Is what, almost exactly what the median tax rate is for Lake County. So overall, taxpayers are paying a pretty similar total tax rate to the school district as all collectively Lake County. So I want to remind the board of the good work it's done since 2011 in regards to the credit rating. So very similar to your own personal credit rating, the school town of Munster have what's called an underlying rating. So this is what Standard and Poor's, who is the credit agency there on the far left. Has viewed the credit for the school town of Munster. I'm going to paint a quick picture of going back to 2011. S and P had rated school town of Munster in A minus, A minus rating. Now in 2012. S and P was looking at credit much more diligently and put the entire public sector on a negative outlook. And 2012, triple B rating. Now we experienced some financial challenges from 2015 through 2019. And the credit underlying rating, rating went to double B. The work that this board has done with the administration received multiple bumps. So in 2020, underlying rating was increased to double B plus. Then more recently, a jump that I've never seen before, going from a double B plus. To now an A rating is a monumental task and effort that no one knows better than this board administration. So I want to remind the board of, in the community, the support you've had through an operating referendum. What is translated to from a credit rating standpoint. And I know President Castro knows well that those better the rating, the better interest you receive on, on bonds and long-term debt. So kudos to the community and this board for such a significant improvement in credit rating. With that, I welcome questions or comments.
Thank you very much for that presentation, Mr. Boucher. I had one question first about some of the projections. Would you consider this, I know, I know you had 4.5% as an inflation rate. Prior to these past few years, it was generally around to some of the expenses and some of those assumptions. Would you consider those pretty conservative projections?
But I'm glad you asked that question. I'm going to go back to this chart if you don't mind. I think four and a half percent, if you look at it outside looking in, it may be perceived as being high compared to prior years. So what we've seen in, from, I'll reference a, a paper or a study done by a group called Research Affiliates. And what they've looked at over the past 40, 50 years on the impact of inflation during times of peak inflation. And, and really trying to absorb and look at the metadata of, well, what's going to occur over the next five, 10, 15 years. So four and a half percent, if you look at it. When inflation crested over 8%. On average, so the median time it takes for inflation to go down 3% or below, the average time it takes is 11 years. So once you hit something 8%, it takes over a decade to get back to what we would consider more of that normal. So if you think about that in the time horizon, so if we're assuming an average of four and a half percent over these next eight, nine years. That seems to be right within the probability of what we've seen through the past 40, 50 years with inflation cresting over 8%. A greater probability that inflation will not be, not go down to what we've traditionally seen by 2031.
As, as a follow-up, these projections that you guys have done, this is what you do, this is your business. You look at an immense amount of data and data points. I just want to reaffirm that you guys have done a lot of work on this. This isn't just a couple of numbers, this isn't cocktail napkin math. This is as effective and accurate a picture that you can give us and that you can provide.
Yeah, it, it's a lot of economic volatility. I wish I could stand up here in front of you and, and give you a crystal ball of knowing what's going to occur. It's just based upon what we've seen, there's higher probability for continued higher than normal inflation. Now, can I look up, can I stand here in front of you and say, with certainty, this is what is going exactly to occur? No, but I think directionally, based upon what we've seen data wise historically, not just in the school town of Munster, but entire Indiana. Lake County, the Chicago region, this is our best guess for what we expect to occur through 2031.
Anybody else have any questions?
And these assumptions you've done are assuming that there's no increase from the state, correct?
Correct, so.
So the umbrella will look better, for instance, if the state were to increase by two or 3%. Yeah, you can give a.
It could be adjusted as needed, so the board can evaluate based upon your cash management policy and your targets. Compared to what Standard and Poor's would like to see you maintain a cash balance wise. But that can certainly be adjusted during the budget process if you like. It's just establishing, and I know Mr. Quakken Bush can talk about this in more detail. But we're establishing a maximum tax rate of point 4196.
Thank you. Thanks for putting all this together.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Boucher. At this time, I would ask Mr. Quakken Bush to come up and discuss your part of this. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Heller, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. Jeff Quakken Bush with Barnes and Thornburg. The resolution that's before you this evening is very similar to the one that you approved back in 2017. With the exception being the form of the question, as Mr. Boucher said, it's significantly different than it was back in 2017. But this resolution does several things. First of all, it approves the form of the question. It authorizes it to be put before the Department of Local Government Finance, which is the state agency that has to review this question. And then if they approve that question, then it authorizes Mr. Heller and the administration to then file that with the county election board. And the county council as required by statute. If that proceeds at that point in time, then this would be on the May 2nd ballot, the primary. And it would then be up for a vote. As Mr. Boucher said, we do have one year left on the existing referendum. So if for some reason, the community would not support the referendum question, then you would still have one year left. But if the board, if the community does approve the question, then this repeals and replaces the existing referendum. So you have a new eight years with the same tax rate and the same revenue spending plan. So you are, would be giving up, you wouldn't have a double amount of money that you'd get in 2024. It'd just be the same that you were planning on getting, but it would then go through. Finally, at this point, we would file this with the Department of Local Government Finance as early as tomorrow morning. They would have 10 days to be able to then review and comment on the question if they approve that. We would then file that with the county officials on February 3rd, which is prior to the deadline, which is February 17th. So we have a little bit of time to work in case there are any questions or issues with the DLGF. They have been very good at staying on task and getting these approved within their 10-day period. And identifying very early on if they have had any questions or concerns, which I don't believe they will with this question. I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have regarding the resolution.
So you mentioned that the language this time around would be a little different than the last time. Obviously, this is a different ballot, different question. But why does that language need to, to be there? Mr. Boucher mentioned that, that number, that percentage is going to be there and it, it looks a little scary. Why can't, why can't we just leave that off?
Because the statute was changed in 2021 by the General Assembly to put this form of the question in there that they felt was. In their words, more transparent of the impact to the community. The contradiction to that, I would say, is that the percentage increase looks as if it's a percentage increase on their entire tax bill. But as you dive down into it, it's actually just an increase of the school corporations portion of the tax bill. So if the school corporation's tax bill is roughly 50% and you're saying there's a 51% increase in that. It really isn't translating into a 51% increase in the person's tax bill back in 2018 when this was first imposed. It's probably something closer to 15 to 20% is what that increase was originally. But that's not the way the question is formed. And we are required by statute to follow the form of that question and to fill that information in as certified by the county auditor. More importantly, the county auditor has a set of formulas that they are required to follow. So they have no discretion in how they come up with that calculation. What this assumes is that the total tax rate for the school corporation is taken off. Before it's then determined as to what the increase is, as opposed to just looking at the increase for the school corporations portion as it relates to the entire tax bill. So it is misinformation unfortunately, but that's the way the General Assembly has mandated it to be for now.
I understand. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any further comments or questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Quakken Bush, and thank you again, Mr. Boucher. Mr. Heller?
Hey, if there's no further discussion, then we would recommend that the board approve resolution 847 as presented.
We already have a motion and a second at this time. I will now call for a vote. All those in favor of approving resolution number 847 as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I would just like to say that I lived through, I had four kids in school. And as many residents, I moved here because of the Munster schools. I was sad to see our class sizes getting bigger, teachers leaving or being let go. Funding for programs being cut, including the specials. So one of the reasons I supported it back then and I voted tonight was to attract and retain excellent teachers. I think they make our school and our school district to keep class sizes small. That's what our community asked us to do and keep our programs. We're also very well known for all our AP classes, our extracurriculars, which makes for well-rounded citizens. So I do support this.
I, I just wanted to ask Mr. Trippenfellers, how many employees does the referendum support?
I don't have the exact date on all the employees, it's 66 teachers. Right there, then we have a small number, I think Mr. Heller has the number of custodians and support staff as well. But I, I know it's 66 teachers.
Yeah, so currently 68 teachers and counselors, 54 classroom aides. We have instructional assistants, 10 custodial staff. We have some nurses, school psych, there's a, a large number of staff that allow us to do good things for kids every day. That we would have to consider in part, as part of a budget cut process if this were not renewed.
This is the finest district in northwest Indiana, I don't think anybody argues that. And the reason it is because of the support of the community through the years. And we, we appreciate that support and we continue to need it if we want to maintain the programs that we have.
Yeah, I would, I think, you know, I wasn't here, but I know that two things that. This board promised the community is we'd never get in the financial situations we were in before. And we would maintain a high quality of education for our students. And unfortunately, kind of the name of the game is if you want to do those two things. This referendum becomes a really important part of that, part of that puzzle.
I'll just say, again, I appreciate you gentlemen making those presentations. It's very informative and very meaningful for us and for the public. I, you know, it's important for the public to know what's at stake here. As we've mentioned, without the referendum, bad things happen. Those projections are terrifying and, and we've seen them. And we've seen what happens when we're able to, to pass those referenda and work together. There's such a symbiotic relationship with this community. They believe in what we do and we make sure to do our best to keep our word and to keep an eye on the finances. And I can think of no better example than that credit rating. I've, I've said this the last, since we've been talking about it, the last three meetings. You know, people in the public probably look at that thing and just go, oh yeah, B to an A, that's cool. It's like, no, you have no idea to jump, I think it was six or seven spots up those ratings in less than a few years is, is incredible. And it just speaks to the impact that the community has had on this. And considering that. I, I asked that purposefully, Mr. Quakken Bush, about that percentage rate. We know the reason, but the public needs to know that that language is going to be on there. But that really will not impact their taxes that they're paying. It's going to be the same rate, passing this will not increase your taxes. And we've seen the power that the community has and what it's done for our school community. And to be able to, to main, not only maintain that, but, but continue it and grow it is, is just a phenomenal opportunity. So I'm excited, I'm excited to work with you all and, with our community and, and get this thing passed. All right. Are there any, I will now move to section five, are there any items that maybe come before the board?
No.
All right. Section six, are there any general public comments? All right, no general. All right, no general public comments. I will now move to announcements. Our next meeting will be February 13th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. And that is all we have officially on the docket thus far. So at this time, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
Schwartz Wolf, so moved.
Smith, second.
There is a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Mr. Bowser?